We'll call the meeting into order. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Apex Town Council. It is the May 21, 2019 meeting. I'd like to welcome everybody here. Thank you all for joining me and everyone else here. We'd like to remind you that we have, as our normal invocation period, we do rotate various things. Tonight, I'd like to invite you to consider how we serve the town of Apex, consider that we serve everyone, that we are here to do the work of the people, and that we put aside our pride, that we put aside our ego, and we serve the people with integrity. With that, I would like to invite you to join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. All right, just as a reminder, there is an agenda out on the podium. It is white and is stapled, and if you missed it, feel free to go get one now. Also, if you intend to speak, there are sheets on the ledge. You need to pick which item you wish to speak to tonight and sign the appropriate sheet. Please read carefully at the top to make sure that you've chosen the correct sheet. The items that are typically considered non-controversial are typically enacted by a single motion. If any council member does wish to pull one item and discuss later, they certainly may do so. I have not heard of any, so I will ask if there is a motion.
I would like to pull consent number seven.
Number seven? All right. And you'd like to discuss that one, so let's put that new business number one. Okay. Any others? All right, not hearing any. Is there a motion?
Motion for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion. All in favor of approving the consent agenda with number seven, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now move to set the regular meeting agenda. I know of no modifications, so let me just ask from town manager or the town attorney, are there any modifications that you know of?
No, sir.
All right. Anything from council?
No.
All right. If there's no objection, then I'll take a motion for approving the regular meeting agenda with the new business number one added.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All approve, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. We have set our agenda. We now go to public forum. This is a time where you speak to us. The town clerk is now collecting the sign-up sheet. The public forum is typically an opportunity for you to share with us any thoughts on your mind. We allocate three minutes per person, and it looks like not a big crowd, so I'm not expecting too much for... Is there anybody?
There's nothing.
Okay. All right, so they're empty. So I will open the public forum time, and having heard from the town clerk that there are no sign-ups for the public forum, I'll go ahead and close the public forum. And we will now move into public hearings. Public hearing number one is application 19CZ05, the Janex Green, and Lauren Stottemeyer is presenting today. Ms. Stottemeyer.
Good evening. All right, this is resounding case 19CZ05 for Janex Green at Zero Jinx Road. This property is located in this general area. The portion of the property to be rezoned is 6.5 acres of the total 12.05 acres, and is located on the west side of NC 540 Highway, south of the Greenmore subdivision, and east of Castle Ray subdivision. The portion of the property is currently zoned rural residential. The adjacent zonings are to the north, planned unit development conditional zoning; to the east, south, and west, rural residential. The applicant is proposing to rezone the portion of the property to medium-density conditional zoning. The 2045 land use map identifies the proposed site as medium-density residential. The proposed rezoning is consistent with the land use map designation. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on February 19 and April 23, 2019, and a copy of both neighborhood reports is in your pocket. A full list of the proposed uses are included on page two of the staff report. The permitted uses proposed for the portion of this property are duplex, single-family, accessory apartment, utility minor, park active, park passive, and greenway. The applicant has provided conditions for both single-family and duplex structures. A full listing starts on page two of the staff report, including some changes proposed by the applicant. The applicant has proposed several architectural conditions for both single-family and duplex. For example, regarding duplex structures, the two dwelling units in a duplex structure shall be one above the other. At least one of the entrances to the dwelling unit on the first floor must have no steps to enter, commonly known as zero entry. This shall only apply to the first-floor dwelling unit. There are a few zoning conditions being proposed by applicant I'd like to point out. So before I explain the first one, currently, there's a 60-foot private access easement between Greenmore and this property. This is how this property has been getting to Green Level Church Road, is through the private access easement. So if and when the access easement along the northern property line is dissolved, the perimeter buffer may be relocated along such property line. Another one is all single-family detached homes shall be preconfigured with conduit for a solar energy system. At least one tree shall be planted in the front yard of each lot. And approval of the rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because it will allow a variety in housing types that are compatible with the surrounding residential development. Duplexes are a form of a missing middle housing that was discussed at the Affordable Housing Workshop last year. So the massing of the duplex structures, if constructed, should be similar to the single-family homes in Greenmore. The planning board heard this rezoning at their May 13 meeting and unanimously approved. Planning staff can recommend approval with the conditions as offered by the applicant. And I believe the applicant has two other conditions they'd like to propose at their presentation portion. I'll be happy to answer any questions, as well as applicant in the audience.
Can you explain with the duplex, when it says one above the other, does that mean they'll have the same door? A single door, and both families theoretically will go in the same door and then go up? Is that correct, or...?
That would be a question for the applicant to defer to, but typically it would be vertical. So one will be just your walk, and the other one will be second floor. So we'll have the applicant answer that first.
Okay.
All right, thanks, Lauren. And is the applicant here?
Yes, he's right here.
All right. If the applicant wishes to speak, you have nine minutes to present. Up to nine.
Well, good evening, everyone. First, I'll answer your question. So duplex will have two separate independent doors, so both families will have independent access and exit. Well, my main job is to design sensors. I'm not in construction business. And in sensors, which are mostly wireless, the challenge is not to design the sensor circuit, it's not to design the wireless circuit, it's to have long battery life. Basically, push the envelope year after year to do more with less, and it's there every year. I've been doing it for the last 30 years, so it's built into my DNA. So whenever something comes up, I hear in my life where we need to do more with less, it excites me. So during course of my work, I hear people in Apex area, in Cary area, where they say things are becoming very expensive. It's becoming costly. I hear couples who say they are postponing having a baby just because they cannot afford a home. My immediate reply is different. I say it's other way around. Babies come first, and they bring luck. But anyway, that's what I tell them. The point is, this is something they present as a problem which looks like not resolvable, but that's what excites me. We need to do more with less. I also happen to meet elderly couples who have problems in accessing, even going up even two or three steps in their home, and it's a common thing we hear. But because of whatever reasons, they don't find something suitable. I see that in my personal relations or other places. So these were the problems my brain was struggling with for the last two, three years without any solution, but I knew there has to be a solution. So one day when I was coming back from my work, I saw this sign of NC DOT auction on this property. It's right by the highway, and I said, that's my chance. This is the opportunity. Why? Because this property is right by the highway. That means people who have money to spend on their houses, they would like to live here. That means I should be able to get this land for cheap. That's the first step you need for building something affordable, something low cost. So I knew that I'll get this land for cheap. Second, I realized that this land is big enough to be subdivision, but not so big that I cannot manage. And even then, I'm taking every step conservatively. So instead of going for all 12 acres, I'm going for first six acres. So that was second thing, that I can, I knew that I can control my overheads in this case. I can try and do things myself. And here's evidence. I don't have any civil engineer today. I don't have any agent. I'm doing it myself. And third thing is to build something which is low cost. So on my road trip to New York, I printed out UDO. I read it line by line, and two things caught my attention, which I was not aware of earlier. One was, I saw that there is something called a duplex. I didn't know that earlier. I only knew condominiums, townhouses, and single-family. And other than, more than that, what caught my attention is that duplex, they don't have to be side by side. They can be one above another. And I said, okay, all the things are falling in place, all cards are in place, and this is where I can do what I wanted to do. And I started on this project. I planned, as Lauren mentioned, I plan to build duplex homes. Not all of them have to be duplex, because I don't know what people will like on it, but I want to keep that option open. And I want to try to build as many duplexes as possible so that the lower unit attracts elderly couple, and young couples or people like me who don't mind going up the stairs, they can go to second floor. So that's the plan. Your questions?
Okay. Any questions for the applicant?
Do you have any additional conditions?
Yes, I'm sorry. Thank you for your energy. So there are two conditions that I included just today, after taking some feedbacks. It's condition number seven in my list. It says, "A minimum of two residential dwellings in this development shall be constructed to include the installation of solar panels and a power system of at least 4 kilowatts capacity." The lot on which this home is located, on which these homes are located, shall be identified on the major subdivision plot, which may be amended from time to time. Out of these two ones, very likely one is going to be mine. I'm an engineer, so I love, I like it. It's not that I have to, but I am all in favor of this, for my own personal home. Condition number eight, following steps will be taken during construction for accomplishing high energy efficiency. A, HPC SEER rating shall be 14 or more. Ceiling board and anti-fracture coating in wet areas will be there to make shower and tuber, tube walls mold resistant. C, jump ducts and air balancing measures shall be implemented for better air circulation. The outer walls, except the ones with brick or stone front, shall be 2x6 walls.
During the neighborhood meeting that you guys had, that you had, do the people that live right there, if, I'm not sure they have in their homes yet, do they attend the meeting? How's it looking in this picture, basically?
Yeah, so they attend the meeting, but I went to them door by door. I rang their bell, I talked with them, I asked if they have questions, if there's anything I can work to resolve. I know all of their names, their phone numbers are in my phone book, and I talk with them not just once, but multiple times. And not just neighbors within 300 feet, I went beyond that. Because, as I said, one of the homes is going to be mine, so I'm going to be their neighbor. I want, I don't want to look at me with frowning eyes when I drive through there.
You expect elderly people for the first floor, for the most part? Is that the goal, I think, isn't it?
It's, I won't say it's a goal. It's like I want to create conditions so that they feel, they know that there is a place available for them if they like to, but it's not exclusively for elderly people. It's like inviting to them. But I don't want to put any condition that it's only for them.
No, I understand. Any other questions for the applicant? All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Jane. And I will open the public hearing, but as the clerk has said, there were no sign-ups, so I'll close the public hearing and refer the matter to council for discussion or possible motion.
So I'm gonna, may I speak up before we have a motion? When I met with the applicant before I saw the plan for the 18 units, I thought it was 18 units, but it looks like it's, the medium density allows for more units, and that's why the duplex plan is in place. I think this doesn't fit with the Greenmore subdivision, to be honest. The maximum density there is three or four. Or, Mr. Manager, what did you say the maximum density was, Greenmore?
2.7.
2.7.
I'll get the number right in my head, and I can look it up for you real quick.
And I measured it. This is about a sixth of a mile from the nearest entrance to the neighborhood, so it's not, they're gonna be driving through a lot of these neighborhood streets, and that, to me, is rather unappealing. So I think I'm gonna vote against it. But I do like the missing middle. I think if there was walkable, if this was near a walkable area or near the front of the neighborhood, I'd be willing to go for it. But I think because it's in the back edge of a neighborhood, I'm not as crazy about the density level in the kind of the back part of the neighborhood. And I was looking throughout Apex, I didn't see a lot of situations where a higher-density area was not either near the entrance or kind of planned around the middle of a neighborhood. This is kind of on the edge, and so that, to me, was a rather unappealing aspect of this.
I think this is unique, personally. I mean, the duplex is targeting the elderly market. I mean, with my meeting with the applicant, he spoke about even his parents maybe living, right? So they're probably not gonna be driving as much through the neighborhood. I mean, it's all speculative, right? But I think this is a unique product that would serve, I mean, I think there's, I mean, they're building houses now, that, single-family homes that are, you know, what do they call them? Multi-generational, right? You have a wing over here for your parents, and then you live over here, and this is kind of a cool setup, I think. Independence, having your own place, but it's right downstairs. Your caretakers or your families upstairs. I think this is a unique product, and I think it fits, I think it fits fine, honestly, because I don't think we're gonna get the number of in-and-outs as you would a normal higher-density project that's not targeting the seniors.
I'll go next. So I did enjoy my conversation with the applicant and the method in which you did outreach in the beginning. Some of my suggestions related to the affordability options and uniqueness and innovation that I thought could, I won't talk to you, I'll just say it more gently, that those things could have been helpful, I guess, to the, what we're looking at now. Do not see that those suggestions that I made were followed at this point. And so while I love the thought of a duplex, a newer one, in Apex, I haven't seen, based on what, you know, what we spoke about, this affordable option, and you can't legally say that, you know, we're gonna sort of market to the elder. You can say, this is something that's friendly towards people, but unless you straight up say, this is what we're doing, you can't legally do that. You can't reserve two over here for a couple wants to get that. They get that. You can't do that. So since it's not really targeted in the way that I wanted, and the suggestions were not put into this plan, I don't see that there's gonna be affordability. I know what that model looks like. I do that every day, and I don't think, I don't see that it's in this, so I'm not gonna be able to support this this evening.
Well, I originally had the same exact concern that Brett had, but looking at it from the standpoint of elderly people there, if it's even, if it's even 20 or 30 percent of the population, it's a large reduction in the traffic.
You can't do that. He's not targeting. He's not legally targeting so.
I understand. I'm just guessing at what might be the population. And of course, the applicant has proposed higher-quality construction, which we're shooting for. So I tend to go and say, yes, I think, I think he's done what he can do reasonably with this.
And for me, I've gone back and forth a little bit on this in my mind. I like that there is a lower price point on some of these than has been before, than we see most of the time, because most of the time, people bring us products that we're looking at that are $350,000 and up, and we're looking at at least $100,000 below this on some of these products. It's something different. We're looking for something different. If we're looking at, you know, how many houses are gonna, how many extra cars are gonna be going in and out of here, it's a small cul-de-sac, so it's gonna be a limited amount of people in and out. Right now, I'm in favor of this.
I'll make a motion that we approve this.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval. Discussion on the motion. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
All right, that passes by three to two. I'll ask those who voted against if you care to add anything to what you earlier said.
I have nothing to add.
Okay.
I'm pretty happy with the type of product, as far as more of that in Apex, just not here. So that's, that's where I'm falling on that part of it.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jane, for coming tonight. And now we move to public hearing number two. And this is application 19CZ07. Liz Lofton is presenting. It looks like it has something to do with town of Apex Fire Department.
Yeah.
What?
Could he?
What could we be doing?
This is resounding case 19CZ07 at 315 West Williams Street. It's located right here. So this property is located on the southeast corner of Hardwood, at the intersection of Upchurch Street, Williams Street, and Hardwood. Public Works is over here. The property we've rezoned is currently owned by the town of Apex and has one building. As you may recall, NC DOT has plans to widen 55 through the section of Williams Street to a four-lane median divided highway, or road. The widening project is expected to impact all of the structures located here. We do have a Wake County landmark located right here, in the blue. So the plans are for the dome building to be moved to this property in the future. Here is a picture of the dome. The property is currently zoned high-density, single-family, and is located in the small-town character overlay district. The applicant is proposing to rezone to office and institutional conditional zoning. The 2045 land use map classifies the property as office employment, and the proposed rezoning to office institutional conditional zoning is consistent with that land use classification. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on March 21, and a copy of the neighborhood meeting report is included in the staff report. The uses will be limited to 10 uses, and a full list is on page two of the staff report. The uses include government service, office, business or professional, or medical or dental office. To summarize the proposed conditions, new development or renovation shall comply with the applicable sections in the UDO. Parking spaces shall not be, shall be accessed directly from Hardwood Street, and no driveway access along Williams Street. The following conditions were added for when the dome building is moved. All renovations shall follow the Secretary of Interior guidelines and applicable regulations in the UDO. If the historic building is designated as a Wake County landmark, then a certificate of appropriateness from Wake County Historic Preservation Commission shall be required. The sidewalk and parking shall be constructed with materials such as exposed aggregate concrete. Planning board heard this item at their May 13 meeting and unanimously recommended approval. Planning staff can recommend approval because the proposed office and institutional conditional zoning district is consistent with the land use classification, and the proposed rezoning is reasonable and in the public interest because the property has been used as non-residential for many years and will limit the permitted uses to ensure any future redevelopment is compatible with the surrounding area. I'm here to answer any questions.
Questions for Liz?
Is the idea that because the dome building is, we want to preserve it, and it's a lot smaller, it will fit on that property with the, and the road right now, when it widens, it's gonna be, it will not allow that current use left, because the parking will be, basically the driveway will be gone, effectively, right? But the dome and the parking will be enough room there?
Yes, we have a sketch layout that shows that the dome does fit here.
Okay.
The main reason for keeping it on 55 is to keep it in its historical context, and that's important for the landmark designation.
Where's it gonna fit exactly? I assume it's on the end of the building?
It's more, in, kind of generally in this area, parking would be along Hardwood.
Okay, okay.
Parking be along Hardwood?
Yeah.
Is on-street marked, marked parking, or just on-street in general parking?
It's partially on and partially off, but it's pull-on spaces from Hardwood Street.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff?
I'll make a motion to approve, if I may.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval, but I need to have a public hearing, right?
I'm sorry for jumping in.
That's all right.
I was such a bad person.
So I'll open the public hearing. No one signed up. I'll close the public hearing. If you haven't changed your minds, I will be willing to consider your motion and second still in effect. Any discussion on the motion for approval?
No.
All right, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now move to public hearing number three. This is a question of annexation, number 656, and presenting is Diane Ken.
Good evening. So this property is the Green Level Market Lot Two. It is up in the very northernmost portion of our jurisdiction, Green Level West and Green Level Church Road. This property has been approved for a site plan for retail and office. They do need to be annexed in order to get town services, and so we do recommend approval of their annexation.
Comments? Questions?
Is the delivery of town services for this property in the next one, I guess, that we're gonna see?
Yep.
Complicated by the creek, or is it, is it coming from, is it coming from Cary?
They have agreement for sewer for Cary, but they have town water, and they will get, have town police services, et cetera.
Okay, okay.
All right, I'll open the public hearing. No one? All right, I'll open the public hearing, no one signed up, so I'll close the public hearing, refer the matter to council. Possible motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second for approval, discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. We now go to public hearing number four, this is also annexation number 657.
All right, so this is Freedom Square, again, up very northernmost portion of our jurisdiction, it is on the corner. It's right next to the one you just annexed. This one is a retail location and gas station. They do have an approved site plan, they need to be annexed for their construction plan approval, same situation. Sewer goes to Cary Water, and everything else will be Apex, and we haven't, there's agreements for the sewer in place. Happy to answer any questions.
Is this actually the most northern piece? It looks a little more north than the other one.
Yeah, I think so.
So who will say that most northern part in Apex?
It will be.
Oh, I see. All right, not hearing any questions, I'll open the public hearing. No one signed up, so I'll close the public hearing, refer the matter to council.
I'll take a chance and make a, to approve.
All right, we've got a motion, some confusion, and a second. I'm not sure, I'm not sure exactly all what happened there, but we'll go with that. Any discussion on the motion for approval? All right, not hearing any, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously, we go to public hearing number five, which is also an annexation number 659.
Okay, so this property is the LeBonsky property, it's the south side of the end of Lynch Street. Lynch Street is located in a small-town character area off of 55 and South Salem Street, near the Apex Peakway. The property is a portion of a larger property that has an existing home up here. This property down here would be for an accessory apartment, it's not being subdivided, it's just being annexed so that they can gain access to water and sewer that's on Lynch Street currently. And so we do recommend approval of this annexation.
All right, questions for Diane?
But this one is, is this the last piece that's not, is there, across the street, is it possible to annex that to, or is it kind of just the end of the road?
So it's just one large property right now, they're allowed to have an accessory apartment on their property, and so in the future, it could be, they could ask for a subdivision of the larger property. Just, I'll make mention, you all looked at having the extension of Lynch Street come out to Apex Peakway at Greppen Hall Drive, and the property owners have been in contact and discussions with Russell about making sure that the home is not going to be anywhere near where the road would need to be constructed in the future. But once, once the road goes through, technically, there's two separate parcels at that point, so they will, they're moving forward with the accessory apartment now, and they're, I believe they're here, yeah, here. You have any questions for them?
Is accessory apartment, I'm kind of vague on this, is it like a thousand square feet, or didn't we set a limit on that?
There are limits depending on what district they're in, and I don't know what it is. Amanda's gonna look it up for you.
If it's more than 10 acres, then it can be up to 40 percent of the original dwelling. If it's less than 10 acres, then it's a thousand square feet.
Ding ding ding.
I'll have UDO for 400, Alex. That's good, very good.
1200, you said?
1250.
Okay.
So, any other questions for staff? All right, I'll open the public hearing, close the public hearing, because no one signed up, so refer the matter to council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we got a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. Takes us to public hearing number six, this is annexation number 661.
Okay, so the next two are cleanups of little slivers that have not been annexed in the past. The first one is located on Jenks Road, it's a portion of a future Jenks Road right-of-way that'll be part of Westford. So you can see where the annexation is, it's right next to Westford at their, at their front. So basically, this little teeny sliver is part, was part of the property at 8108 Jenks Road. The property owner did not agree to sell it to the developer, nor the builder, and so the town did acquire it via quick claim deed, May of 2018. The sliver had to be excluded from the annexation at that time, but now that we own it, we can annex it, so we're just asking for that to be cleaned up.
All right, questions for staff? All right, I'll open the public hearing, no one signed up, so I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second, discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you, public hearing number seven now, number 662.
All right, so this one is a portion of Walden Road. Walden Road is near the Belacasa neighborhoods, and there's a little sliver, again, where the right-of-way is. This one was a lot more complicated, but basically, the owners who, where their driveway intersected Walden Road, they would've had to wait for NCDOT to transfer maintenance of this sliver to the Town of Apex, but the developer didn't really want to wait that long, so the developer talked to the owners to dedicate the sliver directly to the town, which they did, back on, gosh, I guess it was August of 2016. The GIS analyst tells me he was waiting for more slivers and not bringing these randomly, so, anyway, since there were two, he put them together, and so we do recommend approval of this little sliver.
All right, questions? All right, I'll open the public hearing, no one signed up, so I'll close the public hearing, refer the matter to council.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, motion and a second, discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. All right, that passes unanimously. We've concluded the public hearings, there is no old business, we go to unfinished business number one, related to the appointments committee and town manager.
Similar to the last meeting, I had little, nothing to do with this, but you have the cover sheet and the draft policy in front of you. And the policy was adopted, or drafted after your last meeting, when you looked at just the ordinance amendment.
Okay, so this being on our unfinished business is a possible motion. No vote is necessarily required, but if there is a motion for approval, or if the council wishes to approve it, they certainly do need to do so by a motion. As an aside, I think this is unnecessary, and I really don't know why this was brought up. Nobody's ever defined the problem, nobody's ever talked to me about a problem. If there is a problem, we should talk about it instead of presenting more ordinances, but it's up to the council to decide what they want to do.
I agree with the mayor, this is unnecessary, this is duplicative, this is stripping the mayor of something that he has responsibility of in our form of government. He's always been open to talk about anybody who applies for any boards, and I just don't see, again, there's not a problem that we're fixing with this, so.
So I'm not gonna rehash what I've already talked about a couple times now. I just feel like this is, it's always good to have extra eyes on all these committee appointments, and this is why I propose this, regardless of who is sitting in the seat of mayor. I never see a problem with extra input for these boards who are making recommendations to the council. So I appreciate that a policy was put together by staff to define the process, and I'm gonna make a motion to approve this.
Me second.
So I'd like to ask a question, if I can. If we ever have a problem with somebody being appointed to a board, I understand that mayors can change in the future, and we might not have a mayor in the future as open to discuss those appointments. However, similar as you did tonight, Ms. Killingsworth, you pulled an appointment off of consent item to discuss with the council, and we could possibly deny that appointment if we thought the mayor was being good old boy network and just wanted to appoint his friends. But I don't, again, the, it's, you did exactly how the system is designed, and you pulled it off of consent tonight to have a discussion about it. I'm not sure we need to have a committee that the mayor appoints two members on the committee, so to select people for a committee, it just seems unnecessary, I just don't understand. But, it's just, I'm just one person, so I just...
Any other discussion on the motion?
I don't have anything to add to what I've already said previously. Mr. Jensen said he would also like for the whole council to be able to see more of the people who are applying, and he thought that was a good thing as well, so I don't have anything to add to what I've already said before.
What I, what I was looking at was that the mayor would send the information to each of the council members.
Right.
To review, it wouldn't be a committee in that situation, but the mayor would be obligated to present the information to the council, and then, it still doesn't have to be a committee, quite frankly. It could be, the mayor makes these proposals, and then the council can look at it and make their comments. It's still going to be the mayor's prerogative to make the appointment, or make the proposal.
Right.
So, I kind of backed off and thought, you know, do we really need a committee, or do we need a procedure that the mayor sends the information out so that the whole council can see who's been nominated?
And...
I think to me, that's more efficient and, and more complete.
Well, this vote is for the committee and to have that sent to us.
Yeah. See, I don't think you need the committee, in reality, if it all gets sent to us and we have communication, if it's required to be sent, then you don't, you don't need to have a committee meet, because then it's gonna be a committee of two out of the five. So it doesn't make sense to me. As long as you have the first part, where the, where the information comes out that here's who's applied, and here's their resume to each of the council members, to me, that's adequate.
And that's been doable ever since I became mayor. So when I became mayor, the process was, the mayor would call whoever he wanted and say, I'm gonna nominate you or recommend you, and it was a very opaque process. And the first thing I did as mayor was to ask our staff to create a form on the website so that we didn't have to have the mayor just calling whoever the mayor knew. To try to get rid of that. With that, the form then also creates a public record. The town clerk has access to every single applicant, our webmaster, our communications manager has access to every one of those, and by proxy, every council member has access to every single one that gets put in. Anytime anybody wants a list of who's asked to participate in a board, all they would have to do is ask the town clerk who's asked, because it's a running list. There's not an open and closed date, there's not applications. You simply express interest in being on a board, and once you've expressed interest, until you unexpress interest, you're still on that list. Or if you move and I call your cell phone number and you say, oh, actually, I live in Winston-Salem now, okay, then you're not eligible, that's fine. If I sound a little annoyed, it's because this is annoying, because I purposely, as the first thing I did when I became mayor, that was my first thing, is to create transparency. And I feel like right now, I'm being treated as if I'm trying to do something wrong, and I am not happy about that, because I have done everything I could to create this transparency. This information has always been there, and the, the undertone of something nefarious, or good old boy, or creating transparency where there maybe isn't, well, that's not true. There is transparency right now. Anybody who wants a list of anybody who's ever put their name in can get it. You can get it right away. And the clerk can provide that to you in a spreadsheet. It's that easy. And in fact, that's how I get it, I ask for it. Although, about a year and a half ago, I changed it so that I also, in addition to that, get a CC email when someone completes a form. So I don't always have to ask for the spreadsheet if I'm reading my emails and collecting them. I held back a little bit earlier, because I was trying to see if this process would just play out. And this may seem like a small thing. This is not about a power play, I don't care about that. You can take the power away completely, you could say, you know what, we'll just have our own committee. Fine, go ahead, I don't care, doesn't matter to me, I don't have a political agenda, I'm not trying to build a kingdom. My point is to put somebody on a board, or a committee, or a council that cares most about that problem. And if I can't do that without some trust from this council, I'm getting really tired of that, really tired of that feeling. Now I would like for the council to turn this down and to let things be the way they are. And if you can't do that, then take the mayor's name off of this completely, have a committee of council members, you can do whatever you want. Doesn't matter to me, but take your pick.
So I am gonna rehash this, because you, as mayor, you're taking this personally.
I am now.
You are now. And this, this has never been about you personally. This is about whoever is in your seat, ongoing for a long...
And maybe it's not...
Can I finish speaking?
Okay, sure.
So this has been about past, present, future, whoever occupies the seat of mayor in this town. I want to make sure for future whoever is in your seat, that it is open and honest and transparent. That's what I'm asking for.
But the implication there is that it's not currently, and I disagree with that statement.
I'm not saying it's not currently, but it has been in the past.
But I'm saying, by having the application process and having a public record, it has been for three and a half years now. We don't need this to make it transparent. It's public record, everybody who's ever expressed an interest, it's public record, you could go get it, for the last three and a half years. That's transparent.
You know, can I, can I, let me interrupt, but I remember someone asked a question last time with, to the lawyer, like, is it really, you know, open, is everything really open? And I'm not sure we got a proper answer to that, whether it really is a public record. I don't think we got that answer.
I'm trying to look at that right now, so I'll happily give you a response as soon as I can make that determination, because there are different rules with regards to applicants, and whether it's applicants to boards, if that, if the entirety of their application is public record. And that may mean that you may, as a council, have access to it, but it may not be public record for public access, but I'll need to confirm that.
And even if, and thank you for bringing that up. Even if she determines it's not technically a public record, the spirit of it is that every council member has access by virtue of your position. You would be able to ask the town clerk for it, and you, as a council member, even if a citizen can't do it, as a council member, you should have access to it.
Yeah, and so I, I do remember you and I had a private conversation about a constituent in Apex who had, under every mayor that I've sat beside or sat up here with, had applied for one of our boards, and I mentioned to you that that person was still, you know, engaged in the, you know, in the town and still would like to be considered, and you said, well, let me take a look, and I don't think you were aware this person had applied under each of those folks.
No, I didn't know any history.
Yeah, and so I wanted to bring that to you, and you said, rightly so, you said, you know, that could look like, we're not reaching to somebody, we're putting people that we don't know, it could look like that. I see what you're saying now, Nicole. So there could be other people besides him who have applied or been... So there could be other people besides him who have applied or been interested or provided resumes.
Sure.
And each time, I was told something different. And, I mean, this person created videos of different things he wanted to do on that particular board. So I trusted you and gave you that information because you needed to know that.
Sure.
And there could be other people.
Sure, there are other people. There are a lot of people who applied. There's...
But I mean, before you, and you wouldn't know about it.
Oh, yeah.
So those are, so that's something that I brought to you.
Right.
Because you did say, you know, "That could look like we're sort of not, we're ignoring that person, and I don't want it to seem like that for that person."
I suppose, but no one person should take it too personally unless it's given to them as a personal response. But we've had dozens of people apply to things once we opened it up so that people, I say "apply," that's not the word I've ever used. I call it an interest form. You express an interest, right? And there's no time related to it. There's no period. There's no open and close. You just say, "You know, I think I'd like to help on Parks and Recreation." So you go fill out a board. And in fact, I've had people contact me directly and express interest. And I say, "Go fill out the form." And sometimes they do, and sometimes they don't. And when they do, then I consider them. But I also have to consider the other 12 or 15 or 20 people who have also put their name in. Not everybody gets to serve. There's not enough seats, not enough time.
Let me, I'll chime in a little bit. I was opposed to this when it was initially brought up, and I remain opposed. I'm not sure where the vote's going to go, but if it does fail, I would like a more codifying of the, kind of this last part of the draft where it's talking about the, all the applicants shall be sent to the town council. I think that would be a nice transparency thing. I'm not sure when exactly we would want to do that, but before the meeting where we approve, endorse the nomination, to see that spreadsheet automatically would be something I prefer.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's necessary to have a committee to do this.
And I appreciate that. It's a running list, and the list just grows. So it's available for any time you want. We could even have the clerk send it as a part of her regular thing, you know, once a quarter or whatever. Just, like I said, it's a running list. It's a growing list. And I've never tried to hide the ball on anything. And if you want it, it's available. And if you want to pass a policy that says that it's provided to you on a regular basis, I think that would be reasonable. I don't have any problem with that.
Well, if this vote does fail, I would like to kind of work on maybe some language to that effect. And we'll come back and get into it directly.
Oh, yeah, and I think that what you're suggesting is probably the right way to go. I think you will get more communication by doing it that way than we'll do, we'll get by a committee. I think the other side, the other item too is, if the mayor is going through these and making, trying to make a decision, if he's come up with three names that he's considering, it might be a good idea to run it past the council so that they can have a little bit of input. Not that, it's not the mayor's prerogative to make the appointment or make the suggestion, but it always helps to have a few more eyes, but not through a committee. Does that make sense to you, Mayor?
Sure, yeah. I think, I think having a committee for this so that some people can tell the mayor who to recommend to the council seems silly and also bureaucratic, and it would slow things down. We have, sometimes we have surprise openings. We had, the one we were put on consent tonight was someone whose husband got a job in Florida, and so she basically figured out how to do her job in Florida too. So she's, has, she's moved, moving. So we have an opening for the remainder of this calendar year. So we could, you know, I could do what I did, which was to pull up all the names that have previously applied since we opened it up in January of 2017, 16, and went through the list and tried to find somebody I thought would be appropriate. And that's exactly what I did. And that was not bureaucratic, and it got put on here with limited delay. If we want to have a committee, we can have a committee. But I think that would be adding to the bureaucracy, and I think it doesn't work. I think it's a broken process, frankly.
So if I may, as the mayor pro tem, I don't know if it's really appropriate for you to call for the vote or anything. So I think it may be appropriate to ask my colleague, Ms. Killingsworth, if, you know, because it doesn't sound like there's agreement, majority agreement in sort of what we need to do, but there is some consensus on a piece of this. So I wonder if you would be open, councilwoman, to, for maybe the three, two of us meeting with Mayor Olive, to hash this out on our own, to get the policy that sounds like we have consensus on, and sort of have this conversation you like to have. And would you be agreeable to that?
Absolutely.
Would you be agreeable to that?
Sure, yeah.
All right, so let's do that.
I would not be agreeable to that. I think it needs to be a public discussion. We need to talk about it here. We don't have to vote on this specific thing. We could talk about it in a future...
It has to come back. We're talking about writing a policy. We're not going to sit here and write a policy. That's what I'm saying.
It'll still come back to the council.
Yeah, it has to come back. We're not going to write a policy while we're sitting up here. That's all I'm saying, Mr. Moore. I mean, we can all begin to call it a workshop, but that's another meeting. I'm just saying, take the pol, take the stuff, rewrite it, and not have a full-on meeting. We could even do it on email. Write something up instead of writing the policy here.
Don't we usually, and maybe that's right, but don't we usually send stuff to staff and say, "Hey, staff, here's kind of the idea. Here's what we want to do."
That's what we already did. So we're just going to take that and then make some points and then send it back to them. It'll have to come back. But that way, we can move on to the next item and prove upon what the consensus is here.
I just would rather figure that out here, direct staff to do it, and then come back. I don't want there to be a threesome off meeting, I think. Yeah, I'm, yeah.
Well, um...
I'm not going to write a, I mean, I'm good at writing policy, but I'm not that good.
I don't think, yeah, I don't think, I don't, I don't think, I don't think we're necessarily talking about just solving the whole thing, writing the whole thing here.
Right.
But let me, let me ask a couple of facilitation things, because that's my job. Do you want to withdraw your motion at this time?
Yes.
Okay. So, and you've seconded, but she's withdrawn the motion. So the motion, as the originator, she can withdraw the motion. So the motion is withdrawn. The conversation on the table now is, do we want to talk a little bit about, maybe we can call it the backbone of possible policy change.
Right.
But not writing the policy necessarily.
Exactly. The points are...
General guidelines.
Right, and I'm okay with that, councilman. I mean, in a nutshell, for me, I just want a process that is, that puts the right people in the seats. The people who care about the town and who can deliberate in a way that is open and fair, not necessarily ideological, and that's, and has Apex's best interest. That's all I care about. If, if this turns out to, if we end up saying, okay, kind of like what Councilman Jensen said, no committee, but let's find a way of saying, here are all the people who are in the consideration list. That we find a way to make that more available whenever there's an opening, then...
Proactive then reactive.
Right. Then I'm fine with however we want to kind of suggest that. And then if we can come to agreement, then we can either come back to council with that and ask the council to send it to staff to write the formal words. But I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to get along here. So what, what do y'all want?
Well, it kind of sounds like we have an agreement on no committee, but the kind of the backbone, the idea of sending out the list. So maybe we just go ahead and direct staff to put together the official policy.
Why don't we make that a motion? Maybe we got enough consensus here for that.
So I would like to see if Mr. Town Manager has enough information to do that.
Just, and if you're asking me for my opinion, I'll render an opinion, which is, if this council directs staff, we want to see the full list of all applicants two weeks prior to any meeting. You don't have to put it in writing. I take my orders from the town council. If you say, make that happen, and if I don't, then I failed to do my job. If you want to put it in writing, be happy to do that as well. But that's entirely up to you.
Is there any objection to just making that decision now and directing the town manager for that? Does anybody have an objection to that?
The only thing I would...
Exactly what he said.
I would add to, the mayor looks at the stuff. If you, if the mayor chose to consider three people, maybe that should be fed to the council and say, "I'm considering these three people. I would like any feedback that you have." But you still make the decision. Mayor still makes the decision, but he gets a little feedback on the three or four or whatever it is. Boil that list down because...
Do you want to make that a formal process, or do you want to just ask for that?
I can, I can go either way. I think the formal process aspect of, the mayor shall submit three names. I, I can see that, but at the same time, I understand the bureaucracy aspect.
So I think that Councilwoman Killingsworth should kind of say, kind of what she envisions now that we've redirected. I think it's more fair for her to do that this time.
So my thought is, you know, being able to see that entire list, being able to, to see, you know, what your thoughts are on the process as we're, as you're making your way through the process for these new people. So whether it's just sending us an email with, "Hey, there's a planning board opening." Because I didn't even know there was a planning board opening until we have this on the consent agenda. And neither do I know who's on the whole list of people to compare this person to. It's part of the reason I pulled that consent agenda item today. So just basically having more, how do I put it?
Interaction.
More, more interaction, more transparency in that, that process when you're narrowing it down to however many people. You know, the top three or whatever it is.
Okay, sure.
Can I suggest that we, when the mayor requests the list after there's an opening, that list gets sent to everybody, the same thing that gets sent to the mayor.
That's a good way to do it.
And then, and then it maybe is up to the mayor to kind of, the level of interaction, I think probably needs to be up to the mayor. How much, if he wants to narrow, he or she wants to narrow it down to whatever number. But at least the minimum, I think, could be that's, during that time, we all get the list, and we can decide what we want, what we want to do with that list.
Yeah, and we can even make this, we could even take this one step further from an automation standpoint. I mean, our staff know when an opening is either coming or is due. They can be completely proactive, and we don't even have to ask. In other words, we can just simply say, whenever there's an opening, whether it's a sudden opening, or we know that a term is about to end, or some reappointments are coming up, that we ask that the list of people who have expressed interest, which is available through the communications manager and the town clerk, be provided to the entire council, including the statement that says, "What's coming? Here's, here are the two openings," or whatever, "and here's the term that they're going to be considered for, and here's the spreadsheet of people who have expressed interest in it." And I think if we do that, we just let staff automate that process, then you have all the visibility that you want to whoever has expressed interest. The other thing is, just to keep in mind, if there's ever anybody that's interested, the very first thing, if you want to direct them, is tell them to fill out the form, because you got to get your name in the bucket, you know? Well, what's the thing, when you got to put your card in the hat before you can get your name drawn for a door prize, right? So if, if somebody doesn't fill out the form until after they hear about an opening, they're not looking at it right, because it's not a job application. It's, it, there's ongoing interest, and there's ongoing open seats and roll on, roll off. But I think that would be an easy way. Then it, it becomes a lot easier for staff to manage, and everybody gets the information at the same time, early. And obviously, it's never, it's never been my intent nor even staff's intent, whenever Drew would send an email that says, "John Brown says that there's two positions that need consideration," right? That's because, that's how it's codified in the ordinance, that I need to come up with a name and put it out in front of everybody. So if you want staff to just include everybody on that, I think that would be the easiest thing, and certainly he will do it. And we don't have to pass anything according to our town manager. We just say so, and he'll do that. What do y'all think?
That sounds fine to me. I just hope that beyond this council, that that rule would continue with other councils, that people would, you know, that would continue. That's the only thing about it. It doesn't have to continue, and none of us, you know? That's all. I just want people to...
If it doesn't continue, then...
It doesn't continue.
Steps can take place.
It's codified at that point.
I mean, but we may not be here, and people might like, "I don't want, I also want to put my friends up here." I'm just saying, when you put things down, it kind of is a nice to continue to do that so we continue to have more diversity within our boards if we sort of say, "This is a, this is a goal." Right.
Well, I, I'm happy with the list, but to me, I would like to find out before the mayor makes a decision.
You want a shortlist?
A shortlist, a shortlist.
I'd be, I'd be more than happy to provide the council with a shortlist.
And just ask for comments. And still your decision.
Sure.
You can't reply all.
That's right.
You have to, so reply all the legal meetings, so you have to reply just to...
Yeah, but I'll be happy to send, for, for any future appointments, I'll be happy to send a shortlist. And whatever, if that's three, four, or five, I don't know. Because it depends on the number of applicants, and it depends on the quality of applicants. Sometimes there's two really obvious ones, and shortlists maybe only be two. Sometimes it looks like there's four really, five really good ones. And so you just, it's hard to know until you start considering the position, considering what they need to do, how long is that going to last, and, right?
I think that works for me, what you're suggesting.
All right. All right, well, I think we've had that discussion. Thank you. So we'll move forward. Unfinished business number two, and this is related to the school resource officer. I see both of your names, so I'll defer to you first, Mayor Pro Tem.
Okay, so thank you. So I'll give a little bit of background for folks who may not know. So I'll do a little bit of reading, but not much. But in fiscal year 2018-19, we, as a town, added a school resource officer for, to rotate through our elementary schools. We also previously had approved a, one officer at each middle school. So we had a budget workshop because it was a recommendation or an ask for, from the APD of a second SRO, to share the responsibilities rotating throughout the schools. So what we ended up doing as chair of the personnel committee, and also one of the council members who was, expressed some concern about looking at this program as a whole for elementary school students to see if we were doing the right, had the right model in place. And so to give a little background, we had a meeting, which was, what I asked for, is a broader conversation about what we should do as a town related to this. You're talking about a staff person who's almost kind of staffing a school. So we had a conversation with, I called it a brave and a safe space, where people were free to talk openly, but no notes were taken with people's names and things, just so they can have a good conversation. The participants were inclusive of local, public, and elected officials, the head of the school safety, community liaisons, multiple parents, and a student. We received an overview of the current SRO program by Chief Letney, which is a program that was designed nicely for high schools and then adapted for middle schools when we improved that program, or increased that program. Noted through the conversation, though, is many of us were talking about themes and things that they, people experienced and read, and it was mostly really still talking about high school. And then we did learn a few things that, that Carrie, who did have, previously have an SRO in every elementary school, they had eliminated theirs for elementary school. We also learned from a community liaison that there is alternate programs at schools we're looking at and other places in the country we're looking at and have implemented. We also found that neither the school nor the APD was driving, so the expansion of the program, it was just based on the conversation from the last fiscal area years about, should area years about should we expand up to one at every school. The commitment was made, though, to figure out what's the best, best fit to add to the certain, the existing program. The consensus in the room was that there was no need to, there was no need to expand the program beyond where it is, that we should look at innovative ways to do things and to support the current SRO in the schools. Things came out, things like the school should be paying attention itself on some of the dynamics that exist within the school, which if the schools would do that, then that would sort of set up a better, set up the SRO for success really in the school if they sort of deal with some of their school safety dynamics and other things that were discussed there. We asked about the curriculum. What's the curriculum for an elementary SRO? What's the work plan? What does one do if these at a school all day long? We never, we did not get an answer from that question about what would happen, not from the school system. Did not know. And so what we, we, what we learned is a program called Peace Builder is, and I'll just read a little bit. It's called Peace Builder. It says, "The goal is to reduce the number of student arrests and suspensions and expulsions within the school community. Peace Builders will be school discipline intervention workers. Peace Builders will provide leadership development and relationship building support for students, teachers, and administrators. Peace Builders are expected to be the first ones to assist and intervene when conflict may arise amongst students. Since Peace Builders are not law enforcement officers, they will not have the power to arrest students, instead to divert, to de-escalate, and to employ techniques and restorative justice practices." So, you know, from that meeting with leaders who know a lot more than I do about school discipline and about children in a professional setting, what I would like to do is to keep the current program the way it is, not expand by another SRO, but have, direct the staff to work with the school system to figure out, is there another model program that sort of adds and improves upon the current program, consistent, and it could be Peace Builder, it could be something else. So that's sort of what it is. We did not get anything from, around elementary schools from Wake County stating that they need this, or that they were going to support this in any way of, like, I got no MOU related to what the program looks like at an elementary level. So I'm interested in helping the SRO and helping the school community, but by adding some other type of resource, which we would direct staff to work with Wake County. We have talked to Wake County also. This is a very long summary, but I just wanted, because it was a meeting, you know, a meeting with people, I just wanted to sort of give an overview as I said, I told Mr. Moyer that I would as well, to give the full overview.
And let me see if Councilmember Killen's worth wants to add. Your name is on this too, so I wanted to give you a chance.
Correct. I, I think Mayor Pretim Dozier summarized the meeting very well. I think the consensus was that it was not desired to add another school resource officer to the elementary schools, that it was beneficial to leave it the way it is currently and to explore a pilot program through the Peace Builder program.
Okay. Any other comments from council members?
Can I ask you to clarify? So the, the Peace Builders idea seems a little bit different than what we're being asked to do is, is additional SRO or not. So was this, are we, are we asking, are you suggesting we maybe spend the next year investigating this program and whether it would work in Apex, and then perhaps next year proceed with possibly funding whatever this would be?
So, good question. So the first question I think I should answer is, we did ask APD, whether, or maybe it was town manager, are there other needs in the police department? The answer is yes.
Always are, probably.
Yeah, so, you know, we would want to make sure that if there is another need that they really need versus responded to something that they were responding to, a conversation about SROs previously, then that would be my preference. But related to the Peace Builder, yes, I would direct staff to work with the county who is looking at this program as well. The county, the county manager was there, our school board member was there, the head of the school safety for Wake County was there.
Okay.
So that would be, we would be looking at what they're trying to fund, like what they're trying to do in their program, this innovative thing that they're looking at as well.
Okay.
And they are going, they will be the one to fund the peacekeeper, the Peace Builder? Personally, I, I don't want to have the town fund a Peace Builder. I think the SRO is a great idea, one of them. That's enough. A decent idea. And he can rotate between schools. I think it's, it would be good to know what his kind of itinerary would be to how, how he, he would, or she would interact with the children. But I, I just think that a police officer with the police uniform provides an interaction with children that is, is teen building.
Absolutely.
So, and, and I'm sure I can ask the police chief, how many elementary school kids have been arrested by Apex Police Department in the last 10 years? And I suspect the number is zero. So there isn't a, there isn't a avenue of arrests, certainly in, in the elementary school arena, or pos, probably not in the middle school. I can see high schools. Sometimes they get into certain things that you gotta do something about, but even if they had a Peace Builder in the high school, certain actions are just simply against the law.
Yeah, you bring up a good point. So, yeah, the MOU really is designed for interacting with high school students. And so a lot, again, a lot of stuff we talked about are things related to what diversions are to help kids who would otherwise maybe get a record, is to try and sort of get ahead of those things, because like you said, then they become someone who's now got a record for a fight, for example. And so everything we talked about kind of pointed more to high school, maybe middle school. There's not a program that's been written for elementary school, and Wake County's not interested in funding it or trying to write one, but they're more, they're interested in something else than they need to fund, you know, we would love to see if they would fund something like that. But I think a current need should be funded that the police department has.
Well, I, I guess I have a question for Chief Letney. Officer Patel has been running the program at, we have, I think, five elementary schools in Apex. Is that correct?
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Yes, Councilman Moyer, that's true.
So, so he's been running around, I guess, one day a week at each elementary school. And with the instruction we gave him a year ago was to evaluate, come up with a plan to move forward, and come back with your recommendation. And his recommendation, correct me if I'm wrong, was to add one for the upcoming school year?
Wasn't his recommendation. We did review and evaluate the program as directed by council last year, when there was an initial discussion for one per school, and, and you settled on one to, to go through five. The review of that program was positive, and as a result of that, and looking at the workload for Officer Patel and, and trying to provide a similar level of service through all five schools, and recognizing he's getting called, you know, if he's in one school on a Monday and there's something else going on in a different school, he's going back and forth and so on, that it, we would be able to enhance that and provide more service to the school if we had more personnel. It was that simple.
Right. Now, what is the Apex Police Department's peacekeepers code, interaction with incidences that might happen? Because even school resource officers at the high school level, where there's, high school level, where there's more likelihood of an incident happening, I'm sure there's a code for engagement, how they, I mean, you know, we all know of the incident in Wake County schools 18 months ago roughly that happened, you know, but what's your guys' code for how to handle situations? Do you try to de-escalate and redirect peacefully before it gets to the point of an arrest?
Yes, we certainly try to do that. There are some things that, as was pointed out, are against the law, based on the memorandum of understanding with the Wake County school system. The SRO is not involved in school discipline, is not involved in those administrative things that are going on. That's the responsibility of the principal. The MOU was revised a few years ago to make that very clear and to instruct principals on what their role is and administrators versus the SRO. However, if there is a threat of violence, then yes, the SRO is going to be called. All SROs are, we've agreed that they are all to be trained in CIT, crisis intervention team training. As a matter of fact, all of our officers will go through that training when they are appropriate to do so. So they are skilled in, in de-escalation. And of course, that is, that is the goal, is to keep people safe.
Right. And some things are illegal, just like speeding or driving drunk, and you're going to have a record with those things. I mean, you know, unless, there's, there's consequences for actions sometimes in, in something like a fight in school. Correct me if I'm wrong, doesn't, is it a misdemeanor offense that stays on your record for some time? Does a fight even go on your record? I mean, I guess it has to get to a certain point probably before...
It depends.
It, it does depend. It actually depends on the elements of, of the offense. If it does rise to the point of, of being a crime, is, is the student over 16 or under 16, and that will be changing soon since the age of a juvenile is going up to 18. So most will be juveniles and will be handled outside the adult criminal courts. Currently, when, even when those things happen, we refer every case we can to teen court, which does not create a criminal record. Or if it's a juvenile and we need to file a juvenile petition, that goes into juvenile court, does not create a criminal record. If someone is over 16, meaning they're 17 or 18, and there are some charges, then they could be either charged and arrested, or they could be released on citation. Or in most cases, they're released to their parents and there's some school discipline involved. It, it really is a case by case circumstance and what is the best outcome for that case.
Right.
And again, that's high school.
And that's high school, absolutely, yes.
So Officer Patel, obviously you say he's really busy running between the five schools. Outside of his school time or in summertime when school's not in session, does he just sit at the beach, or does he have other responsibilities?
No, sir. We have some elementary schools that are year round. We have some middle schools that are year round. In those, we provide the SRO service year round. The, the schools that do, are not year round, the school resource officers are redeployed to other duties. For example, two of our high school SROs prepare and organize and staff our youth enrichment camp, which is an outreach to middle school students. We do several times over the summer. The officers that do not have those type of duties, you know, some take vacation. They actually don't take them during the school year, so they can be on campus. They'll take vacation in the summer and, and use those employee benefits. And others will be deployed to our directed patrol unit. They are all bicycle certified, and they will deploy to the Greenway Trails downtown. You'll see more bicycle officers out. We have many times in the summer, officers assigned to the Apex Community Center, and those are actually SROs that are not at schools. They know the, the students, they understand that, that type of interaction, and will use them in other, other areas that we have in need.
Right. So I was not invited to this meeting, which I'm pretty disappointed about. I had called and asked if I could attend, because I'm open to hearing other discussions, and I wanted to go to this, this quote, "safe space" and hear other people's opinions and thoughts on this. So I took it upon myself to reach out to individuals, principals at schools. The first SRO officer I believe Apex had was Mr. Gilbert. I reached out to him, and he's a huge supporter of the program, thinks it's awesome for building bridges. And then we've all probably seen the comments on, you know, his retirement page about what he meant to people at the high school level. And I, I firmly believe that solid relationships start at a young age. Even with police officer and community interaction, it starts at a young age, right? And so I think Officer Patel has, has asked for one more SRO. I think I've changed my position on having one in every elementary school. I think two will probably be sufficient. We'd have to see what staff's recommendation is or his recommendation is next year, but I think...
That's what he said.
Excuse me, I'm talking, yes.
No, but he didn't say that.
Yeah, let me finish. Yeah, let me finish. Thank you. We're going to add one for this upcoming school year, which would be two. And then, you know, he's, he's got to come back to the Personnel Committee to ask, you know, for more positions. And so we'll get plenty of chances to discuss whether we want to go any further with SROs or not in the elementary schools. But I think this is absolutely a need for elementary schools. All the feedback that I got in my, in my conversations was, "I wish we had an Officer Patel here five days a week," because he's a huge asset for us. He's, he's done great interacting with the kids, and the kids love seeing him, and they get, I think Rocky, is Rocky part of the police department? The stuffed animal Rocky? I know my kids bring Rocky home.
Yes, Rocky, Rocky. So that, that's a stuffed animal that is based on our first canine, canine Rocky, and, and his handler, Corporal Scott James. So Rocky himself, the actual Rocky, goes to the schools and does some things as well. But Bakem Elementary has done a kind of a fitness program with, with the stuffed animal Rocky.
Yeah. And so I, I'm absolutely in support of adding an SRO officer. I think it's necessary. Again, I think I've changed my position on having one every elementary school, but I think there's a valuable, it's a valuable community piece to have to add another one. So I, you know, the, the council's going to decide what it's going to decide, but, but I am not in favor of this not adding another SRO.
So before, I wanted to respond, so, and make sure for the record that when the first question was asked to you about Officer Patel's recommendation, you said that was not his recommendation. And so, and in the meeting we had, you stated that was not his recommendation. It was not, a staff, staff did not drive this, and nor did the schools. That was, that was clear, that I gave that in the summary, and you said those things. And so to also respond to the meeting, and so what we did was, we had a meeting that was private for people who could, who would share. Some folks are sharing personal information and personal experiences, which should, which should not, they should not have to share publicly. People have been through things and experienced things, and when they rehearse it, they may feel harm. And so for people who have experienced things, whatever the situation is, I do not want to put those people sort of, you know, on display for them to have to talk about it in a public room, and it's a public hearing, for everyone to go back and read all the minutes. Also, we had a conversation too, when Andra and I, Ms. Killenworth and I, were more, were open to, "Let's pull this, let's talk about this, have a broader conversation." So in that, we're willing to be open. And what I did say is that while you're coming, it would make it a public meeting, but also you publicly state your position. And so if you publicly state your position on social media, then it's harder to take that back and say...
You're not allowed to change your positions.
I'm sorry?
You're not allowed to change your positions by more information.
And I'm actually letting you interrupt because I interrupted you earlier.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so you are allowed, but I told you those things. And so when you put yourself out there on social media, and for, this is, this is not, this is a governance issue. It's not a political thing. It really is, people wanted to share their hearts about things, and I wanted to learn from experts and not just be what Nicole experiences or what Nicole hears either. And so when you stake yourself out like that and say, "We're delaying something," instead of saying something a little more general, then that's why, that's why it was like that. You kind of put yourself out there like that. And so I wanted to, that's why the meeting was the way it was. It was no disrespect. It was based on a response.
Was that Officer Patel's, can we get a clarification? Was that his recommendation to add one, or was that from somebody, somewhere else?
So an officer doesn't have the opportunity to make that recommendation. So he has, he's, he gives feedback to his supervisors through the chain of command. And we did the review and the analysis, which was primarily conducted by the sergeant over the school resource unit in conjunction with the corporal and the SROs. And that goes to his lieutenant for review, and then the, the patrol captain ultimately makes the recommendation during our budget discussions. We had the discussion around the SRO, building upon the conversation that council had last year, and the request for five SROs. And that we review and, and look at that, and then come back with, you know, with, with where we thought we should go. So we believed we were following council's intent in looking at the program after the first semester and providing feedback, feedback being positive. We thought it should be discussed for, you know, adding another one, if that's what council wished to do.
So I would like to add something as well. We had all received an email, and I don't know if you had all had time to read this, from a parent of two elementary school kids. And she says, "I'm writing concerning the recent push to add SROs in our local elementary schools, to say I am not in favor. I have elementary school children in both Olive Chapel and Scott's Ridge, between which Officer Patel currently floats." The SRO's role is not elementary, the SRO's role in elementary school is not at all well-defined, and this has led to him being utilized in sometimes inappropriate situations that have the potential to do more harm than good. For example, in an incident where my special needs son was in need of a counselor for de-escalation, Officer Patel was also brought in because... de-escalation, Officer Patel was also brought in because, quote, 'he just happened to be there.' This is not a part of my son's behavioral intervention plan nor his IEP and no one was consulted before this happened. I feel that this was highly inappropriate, especially considering that the SRO has no training in dealing with special needs children in a full meltdown. I am not sure what the goal was, but the end result is that my son is now afraid that he may end up going to jail for problems in the classroom. This is just one story and I'm sure there are others. I do not believe having a police officer on campus at an elementary school is helpful or necessary, particularly if they're not trained to handle young children, special needs or otherwise. Further, it seems to me that putting them in every school would be an appalling misuse of monetary resources when the schools are in sorely need of other, more relevant support like personnel, personnel like nurses, psychologists, and social workers."
Before we go on, I would like to reiterate that I don't want to create a precedent of reading emails into council meetings. I appreciate the sentiment there, but I really don't want to spend too much time dwelling on that. You can certainly consider it in your conversations. I believe that if we start going down that road, we're gonna end up reading a lot of emails into meetings.
Thank you for allowing that.
Yes, but, sure.
And to be clear, my point was that all the feedback that I had received was that there was no problems at all. And my point in reading that was, yes, there are some issues that maybe we need to address in it. Who knows if it needs to be at the principal level or what have you? But there can be some concerns that come up.
Chief, when you guys show up at a house, if somebody calls 911 and they need the police, which all of us would do, if we need somebody, the police, we're gonna call 911, I would assume. What is the protocol, the process for dealing with a special needs individual who might be having a full-on meltdown? Is there some sort of interaction protocol y'all have?
Well, there is. Every officer through the Basic Law Enforcement Training Program receives instruction on dealing with a variety of things, including violence, including people with mental illness. And the first goal, obviously, is to make sure people are safe. So that, there's a variety of ways to do that. It really is case-specific. And are there weapons involved? What's the age of people involved and so on? Officers also are trained in dealing with juveniles. And what juvenile laws may apply, but more importantly, how to interact with a juvenile in a variety of circumstances. School resource officers receive additional training. They are School Resource Officer Certified through the North Carolina Justice Academy, in which we have agreed by MOU that we would make sure all of our officers are trained. Several are trained through the Advanced SRO School and our supervisors are also trained through that. And I mentioned the CIT training. There are some requirements as to years in law enforcement before you can attend CIT. But CIT is required for SROs. And that includes, well, the entire program is about dealing with and helping people in a mental health crisis, regardless of age. So there are components of that for juveniles, there are components for older folks, there are components for veterans. And not really diagnosing, because that's not our expertise. However, de-escalating, providing a service, and then hopefully connecting that person to the appropriate resource that can get them help. The goal is not to arrest, the goal is to provide service. And, you know, there are times where people in a mental health crisis will commit a crime. Could be an assault, it could be weapons of violence, it could be a variety of things. And officers will look at what is the best outcome. However, we also have to understand there may be victims involved. And the victim of an assault has a right to be heard as well and directs some of the outcome of that. So the protocol, to get more specific to your question, really gets back to what is going on in that circumstance in that family. And we deal pretty regularly with family issues, domestic issues involving not only folks who are married or in a relationship, but also with children. And right down to truant issues and all kinds of things. And actually, if it's close to a school and we get a call like that and there's an SRO working, we usually send them. Because they may know the child, they may know the family, they may have a relationship already, and they actually have better experience in dealing with juvenile issues. Because that's with you all the time.
Chief, for all our SROs, just to be clear and put a fine point on it, a hundred percent of our SROs, before they go into a school for their first day of service at that school, they are trained and certified by this academy that you mentioned, the NC Justice Academy?
They are, yeah, so there's several components to that.
Yeah.
The SRO school is generally in the summer, that's where we try to get them in. As you remember from our budget request, generally when we ask for a new SRO position, we ask for a half-year position the year before we need them. So we bring them on, hopefully around that January, February timeframe. We select, we have a process for selecting them, which includes generally a school principal or school administrator. When we select them, we do a field training program in a school with an existing experienced SRO. And we get them scheduled for those trainings, the CIT training and the SRO training. Before they are released on their own, it is our goal, I believe everyone has been certified beforehand, I would have to check to make sure, and I don't want to misspeak. But it is our goal, because we know that they have those training programs around the June, July timeframe. We get them in those schools, they get certified in CIT, is an SRO, and then they start in whatever school they're assigned to in August.
So if I can, as a reminder, that when Chief Lutney gave the overview of the program, he said this is a program, it's a partnership between schools and police. Neither the school nor the police have asked for the expansion of this program. And so, what I would like to see us do is respond to what the needs are of the Police Department and see what that need is and address that. Again, that was, that's the partnership program and neither was the one asking for this. And the county said they don't have a MOU for this and they don't have a work plan for this, for elementary schools. And I do think that sometimes the, it's the SRO gets pulled into something, you know, that he was, he or she was not asking to get pulled into. And so I think that's some education and training and making sure that school personnel don't pull people into things. I think that that's part of the thing that we talked about too, the school's responsibility with making sure that officer is set up for success in that program by not pulling him in or her into things, that really, that are administrative.
Well, can I get, I guess I'm still a little cloudy. I feel like, I feel like the police are asking for another position. It went up the ladder through chain of command and it was evaluated and y'all are asking for an extra position.
We put that in our budget request for fiscal year 1920, based on the conversation among council for fiscal year 1819, where we added the initial SRO. We were requested to do an evaluation and then to build on the program from that. And the conversation, as I recall, was we'll start with one, if it's a success, we will consider adding one in subsequent years. So our understanding of the process is the way to do that, is for us to put it in our budget request and then allow not only the manager to have that discussion with us, but then council to have that discussion. Because of the success, do we see a value? Yes, we do. We can do more than we've done with one SRO if we have two. It's simple numbers. We can build upon the success, we can address the concerns and move forward. However, as the manager mentioned earlier, we provide the service that our council expects and requests and directs us to. If your direction is we provide it, we'll provide it. If your direction is we don't, we won't.
So I have a question. If we do not fund another SRO, what would you fund if you had a choice in your department?
We have other requests that were made that have not been filled. We would have to determine which is the best of that. There are, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, so we would have to look at, within the budget, what, is it the same dollar value we would have to fit or is there some other way to do this? So I can't answer directly if we were to be within the requests that we already made. If it were for a police officer, just not as an SRO, we would assign that person to our directed patrol unit, which is a flexible squad that supports and assists in a variety of things, including patrol, investigations and so on. To add one officer to a patrol squad makes them uneven, so usually when we ask for that, we ask for four, because there are four squads and we even that out. One officer in a squad is not as much of an advantage as one officer in a specialized unit, directed patrol, for example. Or we could go back to the requests that have been made and see where the best fit is for that position.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I would like the record to show that the Police Department is asking for an SRO and it's not a partnership. Because a partnership is where the town of Apex and Wake County Schools partners together to fund some position. This is 100% the town of Apex stepping up, where in my opinion, I feel like Wake County Schools should be stepping up to provide this position. But it's not a partnership, it's the town of Apex doing this. And the records show, again, that the town of Apex Police Department is asking for this position.
So one thing I'd like to add, I've, we've talked about this for a while now. As a reminder, the reason we first started talking about an SRO at elementary school and how odd that was, and even asking the question, huh, how come we've never done that before? Just as a recap, SROs started at a high school, at high schools, because that's at the level where a student can conceivably cause enough trouble in the school that teachers cannot control them. You can have sixteen-year-old students who can overpower a teacher, even one-on-one, much less if there was more than one. Then we had middle schools, because, well, there are some eighth graders that, for whatever reason, have the ability to cause just as much difficulty. The security of elementary school students is what came up. The security. That means from an outside intruder, not an internal student who's just causing trouble. I'm reminded of the brief anecdote of a reporter who showed up at Apex Middle School, if I recall correctly. Feel free to correct my facts if I'm wrong. Opened a door to walk right into a hallway school and was met by one of our officers who said, "What are you doing here?" Or some version of that. And it's that, it's that level of, why are you setting foot on this school, that I think caused us to ask the question, is there security from outside intruders at the schools? And when we discussed about five versus one, the one was, one of the, the primary tasks was not only in providing first-level security, but also training the teachers and faculty of the school on things that are secure. How to be secure when the SRO is not there? What are you, you know, what is your process for going out an external door? Do you make sure it closes behind you? Is it locked? How do, what about letting people in? Right? Do you hold the door and assume it's apparent? You know, there are all these kind of processes. And it became very, very clear to me when, and I think Councilman Gant, you went to the same school, where we, at Salem Elementary on a reading day, a year and a half ago, where I quite innocently went in the door and said, "Which way is," and I knew the teacher's name who asked me to come read, "classroom." And I was pointed down a hall and I got partway down the hall and somebody, another teacher came this way and saw me and she said, "How can I help you?" And she basically didn't take her eyes off of me for about twenty seconds until I realized, oh, I'm an intruder to her. And I said, "I'm here to read." And she said, "Can I carry, can I walk you back to sign in?" And I said, "Yeah, absolutely." And that was a policy that was intentionally trained and she followed. And that, I think, is the kind of value that an SRO provides to a school, even if their time is split across five schools. I didn't want to lose sight of that, but we've talked for about half an hour and I haven't really heard anybody discussing that. So whether we decide to, and, and, let me not finish that sentence for a second. I also want to thank the chief for doing exactly what the council asked, because I remember very clearly, we said, "Let's do one and you give us a report back and tell us how it went." And you did exactly that. So thank you for doing exactly what you were asked, which was to ask the SRO, tell us about what happened. You rolled it up through the sergeant, it went to the patrol captain, and the patrol captain said, "We could do more if we had another one." And that's basically what happened. And so, thank you for following through on that. How you position that, is the Police Department asking for another or is it us asking them to ask for another? It gets a little muddy. So I don't want to get too, too into that. What we've heard, though, is that having one SRO has been deemed successful. In addition, having a second SRO, according to the Police Department, could enhance and divide that work up. Whether we as a council decide we want to add a second SRO is totally up to us. I want to make sure that, to me, the primary focus is on the intruder awareness. If not for that, I'm not, I'm not all that worried about it, because then we can go to the school system and say, "You have disruptive students, you have teachers who need better training, maybe there's a peace builder opportunity here." Whatever. We let the school system monitor that. What our Police Department is tasked to do is to provide safety and security for Apex. And if a school is in Apex, it falls in their jurisdiction. And, and, yes, even to the point where if two parents who are at a PTA just break out into a fistfight, at some point, police are probably gonna be the ones that take care of that, whether it's during school or not. But the fact that it's on the school campus, the Police Department does have a responsibility. They don't just walk up to the edge of it and go, "This is a county school, we don't, we don't do anything there." So I think, I think safety and security of elementary students is very important. That's why we got into this the first place. That's why several people said to me, "Thank you for putting an SRO at elementary schools." I only heard people thank about, thank us for doing that. Us, not just me, us. The question before the council is, do you want to add a second SRO or do you want to leave it as it is with one SRO? Or do you want to cancel the whole program? And I think anything else is outside of our purview.
So my personal preference is, this is working. I would like to see it stay the way it is, with one SRO going between five schools.
Is that a motion?
That is.
Are you making a motion?
I'll make that a motion.
And I'll second it.
Quick questions, chief, before we continue this. Can you continue to be successful with one SRO at elementary schools?
It depends how you define success, but yes, we can continue the program that we have.
Can you maintain?
Can we try to build upon it? Absolutely. Our goal is to provide the best level of service we can that our community expects and to keep everyone safe. And we will do the best we can within the resources that we have.
All right, thank you, chief.
Sure.
Can I ask one more question that remind me of? So, related to the mayor's question, if you were able to fund the position you talked about that sort of rotated, could that person sort of be at schools? Could that be one of the assignments to, for that rotating officer, patrol officer you mentioned? Give that person flexibility to do some things?
Not that person individually. That unit has a variety of responsibilities and handles just a wide variety of things. If there were a large event at a school, for example, we've had several public safety days at our elementary schools in the past few months, that takes more than one SRO. So with that, we will bring Director Patrol Unit, we bring the supervisors, we bring our community policing officers. You know, we have a whole structure around us that will be there for events as, as we need to. For, you know, some sort of crime or response, obviously we have patrol that will respond to that as well, so.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, so we have a motion to continue with the single SRO. And I believe you seconded it.
I second it.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? All right, not hearing any, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
All right, that passes four one. Let me just check with the town manager to see if there's any further question on that item.
No.
The peace builder program?
So we'll meet unmet needs in the Police Department that were requested in the fiscal 20 budget. So the budget will still balance, not a problem. Then Ms. Killingsworth, just mentioning about the peace builder program, if we could get direction from council to investigate that program with Wake County Public Schools.
I would like to give that direction.
I would like to give that direction, if the council agrees, to at least investigate it, to see what it entails as a pilot program, and see the details, and then present it back to us.
Including funding.
Yes, including.
Can I ask, how is that in the purview of the town of Apex?
So...
It doesn't feel like our responsibility to me, that's why I say that. It feels like it falls completely in the responsibility of the county.
It is a, it's a pilot program that they're discussing, so it would be something that we would be a partner with. So that's why I would like for staff to investigate that a little bit more, to see how much involvement we would have in that.
So, so I can give some more context to that. So the Wake County manager has hired a sort of adverse childhood experiences person to deal with childhood trauma and how it presents, and so he has that arm. And then Wake County Schools obviously has that goal, too. So I think that there is more conversations about how do we help our children and their families between Wake County government and then Wake County school system. And so that's sort of, if there's, if there's going to be funding, since they're not funding, they don't even fully fund SROs in the high schools, so if, or crossing guards at high schools when it's a, you know, the nature of the road is bad. So if they are thinking of funding municipalities or school systems, then we don't want to be left out of something if there's something that can help our children here who may be suffering from childhood trauma. So that's sort of a...
I don't disagree with the goodness of it. My question is, and as I said before, the school, even though it's county property and it's managed by the county, our police department has safety and security responsibilities because it's within our town limits.
Yeah.
So that, to me, is very clear. If we're going to, if we're concerned about safety and security, and we feel the only way to address it is to put our officer there, then I understand that. And I certainly think we could advocate individually to the county, but I don't see how the, I have a hard time seeing how that's a municipal problem.
So I'll add again, so we have Danica, who deals with, I don't like, I know the title's not victims advocate anymore, right? But she is not a sworn officer, but she works on a lot of the issues that we have, social issues, and she's incredible at it. That, that was a funded position, and we believe in that. So this is something that works along with that. She deals with ACES, I do, all of us are sort of working on there, on some of the things that we're serving on those steering committees based on Apex. So the work I'm doing in ACES has nothing to do with my Justice Center hat, and it's just a love of mine, but it is, I am representing the town of Apex on the steering committee of ACES. And so if we have a police department that has someone that's working on social issues here, then it, it does sort of fit.
Okay.
Yeah, and my thought is just to explore it. And if staff just completely decides it's not within our purview, they'll, they can bring that back to us and say, "This is not within our purview."
I'd like to know what the costs are to explore it, rather than just let the school system develop their program and then we can look at it at that point. I, I don't, I have to agree with the mayor, I just think that that's, it's the school system's responsibility. We're talking about a peace builder, which is nothing that we have here. I just, I think from an economic standpoint, we should just let the school system develop that program if that's what they want to do.
Definitely, economically, definitely.
I don't, I don't know what we can bring to the table that much either. It's their program.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of moving forward with anything like that. Is there anything further on that? I don't, I guess maybe I could say if, if it's all right. I'm not opposed to learning more about it, especially if the town manager wants to at least appoint an appropriate staff member to understand it a little bit better from the municipal side and see, is there a part we play or could play? I think that's okay. That, that certainly doesn't require a hard budget on our part, and it, it's a soft budget thing where, well, that's my term, but where the town manager can put that on somebody's responsibilities list and say, "Hey, in the next three months, can you, you know, make one of your, you know, hey, I've challenged you to do better in your job, here's an extra over-the-top kind of item you can do. Learn about peace builders and come back and report to your coworkers or something."
Right.
And then, then we can, we can decide if we can leverage that information, because, hey, she's on to something, he's on to something. Or maybe there's one of those things where we look at it and go, "We've looked around, and everywhere we've seen, it's implemented at the health department level or the school level, and since municipals, municipalities here don't have health departments or schools, maybe that's where it belongs." I don't know.
Yeah. Just, and this is the last thing I want to say.
Sure, okay.
So just think about, if you mentioned about human trafficking, you mentioned, so, you know, if you see a young, a young girl, a certain age, with someone of a certain age, do you notice, is there something that's unique? So let's say that this young person is in our schools, and she gets away from that situation, surely ACES is involved in this.
Oh, absolutely.
Right? And so...
Well, as you remember, I went to the ACES training before you ever had it here, because it was part of the human trafficking story. We did that here in Apex.
Yeah.
So I'm, I'm very aware, and absolutely, totally.
Yeah, so I went to that, too, and it's great, but, so I just want to say that our children are dealing with a lot, and so I feel like if, if the county can help with that, then maybe children don't have some certain problems, and then Wake County Human Services has to get involved, you know, and people have to be taken from homes and things like that. So I'm thinking this peace builder can help with someone who might be having a challenging day because of things that we don't know they're dealing with, so.
I think it very well could.
Thank you.
I do. I just don't, I don't see how it's an Apex budget item, but I do think it could help.
Oh, yeah, not a budget item.
Yeah.
It's to get, to get help to pay for it, that's the goal.
Yep.
But thank you.
Any other questions, Mr. Town Manager?
No, sir.
Okay. Yep, thank you. Any, so if there's no objection, we'll move on to unfinished number three, and then we will take a recess, if that's all right. All right, number three, this is regarding live streaming. So Town Manager.
After the last meeting directive, we come back with a policy draft, we have that. We have the costs associated with live streaming. There is a zero-cost option. We're not recommending the zero cost. What we'd like to do is an option that our IT director's priced at at about $2,500 one time, that will put a second camera in the room. So the one camera that we have now will continue to do the job of recording the meeting. The other camera will do the job of live streaming the meeting. Also give us an opportunity for redundancy, so if we have issues like we had with the last meeting, which we were finally able to recover that video, it just makes it a whole lot easier. So you have the policy in front of you, have it answered any questions you have about the draft? We're ready to walk down the road towards implementation and then evaluation of, you know, how many people are actually watching the live stream, and that will factor into your conversations in next year's budget, as far as how much money, more money do you want to invest in, in live stream.
Questions? Or a motion?
I'll make a motion to invest the $2,500 into a second camera.
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion on the motion and multiple seconds?
Will Mr. Jensen include in that motion to direct the staff to begin, to implement the policy and begin to livestream as soon as practicable?
I recognize, yes, staff needs direction.
Okay.
Two.
Policy and the funding. To implement.
To implement the policy.
All right. All right, we got the friendly second.
One more question.
Oh, another question?
And just to be clear, also, to adopt the policy, does...
And adopt the policy. Okay.
I'm not going to make any more.
Friendly amendment? To adopt the policy.
Adopt the policy.
All right. All right. So we have, we have the motion to go with the $2,500 additional camera for redundancy and also load sharing of the work, and adopt the policy and approve the town manager to go ahead and implement the live streaming as soon as practicable. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that passes unanimously. We will take a short recess and come back to, go to new business.